Meeting of the Mark County Water District to order today is, this is a special meeting of the Mark County Water District. Today is Thursday, November thirty, two thousand twenty-three, time is six P M. First item on the agenda tonight is the review and consideration to approve the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look over those?
Some have.
Mister Henson makes the motion to approve the minutes. Can I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Okay.
Greg Crum spoke first. Mister Crum, Mister Crum seconds. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, next item, three A, uh, review is consider, uh, consideration to approve the treasurer's report. Uh, Mister Miller.
Alright, I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Um, the treasurer's report for the Mark County Water District. Page three A four. Total operating revenues, two, two million nine hundred ninety-three thousand, oh, I'm sorry, three A five. Total billing charges, two hundred and sixty-three thousand four sixty-two gallons billed, just, oh, just under thirteen million, twelve eight. Customers billed thirty-three seventy-seven. End of the month's accounts receivable was three hundred fifty-five thousand six thirty-four. End of month balance, negative eight thousand eight eighty-three, available balance of negative forty-four thousand four fifty-three. Total unrestricted cash, one hundred seventy-five thousand two seventy-two, total restricted cash, one hundred thirty-two thousand six eighty-nine. Total cash and investments of three hundred and seven thousand nine sixty-two. Questions about the financials, treasurer?
Any questions for Craig on the treasurer's report? Not, I'll seek a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion.
Mister Sloan makes the motion. Can I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Mister, can we say it?
We just wanna do it, right?
Everybody's anxious tonight. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, next item, three B, uh, other financials. Craig?
So, building something, annual review for you guys to look at. Number of bill customers down thirty-three, but payments received was up, uh, roughly eighteen, or, yeah, eighteen thousand dollars, something like that. So, payments received, the two hundred seventy-two thousand, um, this year versus last year at the same time, two hundred fifty-six thousand. Any questions about the annual review there?
Any questions for Craig on three B, the other financials? If not, we'll seek a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Mister Sloan makes the motion. Can I hear a second? Mister Hensley seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next item on our agenda is, uh, under, uh, four, a little review and consideration to approve the payment of the bills. Um, any questions, uh, for, uh, staff on the bills this month?
So, the, uh, pump rental, is that for two months or third?
Uh, I think we'd have to check on that, but I believe the, uh, initially it was a higher cost. We had to bring it in from Arlington.
Yes.
So, it, it could be one of those things.
We're also getting the residual of the last couple of pumps we had too, the Sunbelt pump. That was rented before it went down, and we went to the Rainford pump, so it's in two payments. Sixty-nine.
That's what the bills said.
But I think it's for, I'm pretty sure that the transfer freight from San Antonio to Inez was right around eight thousand dollars.
Like the rain that we've had's been challenging, because we've had no rain, river's still really low, creeks are really low, it's, you know, we desperately need some rain. We're maintaining, uh, not, well, it's been tough, but they're maintaining. And, uh, we'll continue to do what we gotta do, uh, moving forward to keep the reservoir, uh, you know, full, make sure we've got water. I'll be attending the next meeting with, um, uh, Bell Engineering and Pace and, and those guys. And, uh, hopefully we'll see some movement on getting our projects complete, so that's not an issue. But, uh, desperately need a little rain.
And at our last meeting, I put Bell, Big Sandy, and Pace on notice that the district would be seeking refund for the diesel fuel receipts and the rental for the diesel pumps that we've had to have in place because they haven't completed their project in timely fashion.
Yeah, it's crazy. So, I think the response was, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, their response was, we, we will see what we can do, which, yeah.
You know, last, um, last call, I was going with Steve, I asked him, is there any other option since nobody's building that cart? Is there, is there a way? He said he was gonna talk to you about it.
Uh, he has not, but when was that?
Um, the last time that we had the A M L.
That was the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I guess, it was a while.
Yeah, or last week?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, maybe.
Twelve.
So, yeah, that's definitely a drain on us right now. You know, get these projects finished and, you know, that goes away, but for now, we've gotta do what we've gotta do to keep the river full of water. Any other questions, uh, on the bills? Not, I'll seek a motion to approve.
Some have.
Mister Henson makes a motion. Can I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Mister Sloan seconds. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, next item on our agenda, uh, is legal, Brian, any issues that you need to discuss with the board this evening? Move on to our operations report, six A, um, the Alliance Operations Report. Craig?
So, um, a lot, a lot going on, um, a lot of leaks, but a lot of good things going on as well. Uh, we were able to get the V F D installed for the electric pump down at the river, uh, that's installed and wired up. Um, keep in mind that, that the raw water electric pump we have down there is only rated at one point seven million gallon a day roughly. It's, uh, about sixteen hundred gallon a minute, twelve eighty, I think's the most we've seen out of it, right? Twelve eighty, about twelve hundred and eighty gallon a minute, and we are, uh, we need more than that. We're overtaking one-five from the reservoir right now. So, in order for us to put the electric pump in right now, we are gonna have to tear out the riverbank and cut a tree down and drop the pump down to the river level. Because the river's so low at two point two feet right now, we can't, the suction lift is too high. If we try to put the electric pump on right now, we'll destroy the electric pump and we'll have another twenty thousand dollar bill for repairs to the electric pump. We do not want to do that. We don't wanna rip out the bank right now either, because eight thousand dollars to rip out the bank that we paid with grant money to Riprap, right, versus keep the rental pump that we have right now, that's actually doubling the amount of water that we're taking from the reservoir, right? So, we're taking one-five, it's putting roughly two-eight in there. While it's an expense, we can get the reservoir filled up when it's low. The electric pump is barely gonna keep it even, because it's the smaller of the two.
And now, it, it wouldn't do that.
Right.
Suction lift.
With the suction lift, it won't even do that, right?
You couldn't achieve twelve, twelve forty or twelve eighty, there's, there's no way.
There's no way. So, we'd have to completely destroy the side of the river there, dig it all down, put the pump on the edge of the bank. And, uh, it's, it just doesn't make sense to do it. Uh, it makes more sense just to leave the pump that we have in place right now and pump it as much as we can to keep the reservoir filling. Um, we had the pump off for the past two weeks and we, the, the reservoir dropped quickly. We don't have any, there's, the little bit of rain that we have right now is going right into the soil. There's not enough saturation for us to get runoff. So, we're not getting runoff from the hills into the reservoir from any of the rain, really. Um, it's just not making an impact at all. And, uh, so until we get some real alley washers and it rains for a good solid couple of days, we're not gonna see any river or any rainwater helping the reservoir. Only thing that's gonna help it is pumping, so we just have to keep pumping. And, and my mind, it makes more sense to use a pump that we know runs right now than risk pulling in and putting the electric pump in and running into a problem right now, or just, I, we have to make sure the county stays in water. That's our primary objective.
I don't know if you've seen, but on Facebook, people are posting that they don't have, um, much pressure and they think it's because the reservoir is low. They seem to be blaming on that.
Okay, well, that doesn't work that way.
Okay.
Yeah, it, the reservoir has no impact on any customer pressure whatsoever. That's raw water, it goes straight to the plant. So, if the reservoir's low, all that that impacts is how much we can produce.
Yeah.
Now, what it will do is if we can't produce enough water and the tank levels are low, then that will affect customer pressure. So, if a customer lives close in elevation to the tank that's in their area and the level is low, as some of our tanks are right now, they could see a lower pressure in that situation.
But that situation is not going on now.
We do have some low tanks, uh, but if customers have low pressure, we'll investigate them, they just need to call the office and we're gonna work order. We, we don't monitor Facebook, can't stress that enough, we do not monitor Facebook. Customers have to call the office or get online and submit a request. I get the emails, Tyler gets the email, Tassie gets the email, we all see them, so if a customer has an issue with pressure, please let us know and we'll investigate it immediately.
I just wanna let you know that it's being fixed.
Thank you. Clarifier one, if you read through the ops report, you'll see that we brought clarifier one online and it's run a big leak. Additionally, the rake drive did not, uh, turn once and then it stopped. Um, and it was, basically that rake drive is, is elevated just far enough above the bottom of the basin so that it scrapes the sludge into a sludge pit, but not so that it touches the bottom of the clarifier. And then it has what's called a torque drive on it, so that if that rake drive for some reason over torques, it doesn't rip everything out. It'll shear a pin off, it's a safety mechanism. Well, it's over torquing and it was just stopping. It wasn't over torquing enough to do anything with the shear pins, it just stopped moving. So, they had to drain the basin, get down inside of it, they free swung it and it wasn't hanging up. Come to find out, there was some links on the chain that drives it that were drooping, causing it to bind as it was going around. And, um, that's what the problem was, they were able to fix that, but they also had to fix a couple more leaks that they found in the clarifier as well. And while they were draining it, and this is kind of a blessing in disguise, while they were draining it, they came into a problem with the actual waste or drain valve, and sludge valve wasn't draining the water from the tank, it just stopped, wasn't draining at all. So, they had to come in and they had to jet that line, try to clear obstruction that was in it. Seems to be draining now, still not certain it's draining as well as it should, but it is draining well. So, um, is there a timeline on when they're gonna come back to?
To disinfect the filters? As it stands now, uh, so long as we get the unit filled, which shouldn't be an issue, uh, the week of twelve eleven, S four solution will be back to disinfect the filters again and hopefully startup will follow then. You have a, about a, a week to two week window, once that disinfection has been performed, we start up the unit, so somewhere within that timeframe.
You say you had another big leak that came in? What about the other little leak?
They fixed that one, but this was a, this was a different leak. Well, no, they went ahead and fixed that leak while they went in this time, so since they had to take it down.
Is that the third?
That, that we know of.
Is that the third leak or the?
Fourth?
Yeah, more than three.
Fourth leak, fourth or fifth? Not super impressed.
No.
With this company, and keep in mind that the people that did the metal and the building is a sub of Pace, right? So, Pace, while Pace is a contractor, they subcontracted the metalwork to a company called Fat Tech. Fat Tech does this, this is what they do, and it has not been impressive. So, hopefully when we get it filled this time, the leak issues will be resolved, we'll be able to disinfect the filters and we have a put on.
When is penalty phase?
That's just it, that's, that's a great question, John. When you decide it does. What we have done is we have given them extensions on the contract. We gave them extensions because of the cart initially, we gave them extensions because of the clarifier issues originally. We've given them multiple extensions. The board is one hundred percent within their discretion, and I would one hundred percent support starting to impose, um, penalties for their, for the length of time that it's taken.
I mean, it's costing, you know, it's a, it's a, I understand it, it was like for the generator when you can't get a part.
Right.
You know, that's, that's understandable.
Right.
But that's not understandable to have four or five weeks and, and something that, that, that's not good quality work.
I agree.
So, there is a?
And if it's costing us money, what if it costs us?
Yes, you can.
Should come out then.
Which is called, uh, liquidated damages.
We call it liquidated damages.
Good work. We can't impose liquidated damages on the contractor and the engineering firm for the amount of time it's taken them to do the job. And I think you're there.
I do too.
I think you're there.
This job should have been completed.
They're gonna come to us and ask for an extension, and it's within your rights to deny their extension.
So, they have to come to the board?
Well, they'll ask us to bring it to them, but my recommendation is gonna be to have, to, for the board to request Bell Engineering to show their face to the board at the next board meeting, which is what I think should happen. Does anyone have any other questions about the project that's turning into the project that never ends?
Well, I mean, this, you're right on. This, this is accurate, you know, that's, that's caused all of our problems before, we just let all this stuff slide.
Right, yeah, we can't.
Not anymore, not only us.
I completely agree. Um, on the distribution, uh, two, um, really good things in the water plant, uh, Josh Vaughn, one of our new water plant operators received his class one A, uh, water treatment license, and Cody Rainwater, uh, class is class four. So, Cody Rainwater is our newest class four water treatment plant operator. So, kudos to him, very proud of him, um, super smart guy.
He started as an intern and.
Started out as an intern in the office, that's right.
Awesome.
And, uh, he's, uh, really doing a great job in the water plant, um, and really, really, he studies hard, very studious. He's achieved his class four and could be more proud of him, so that's, that's exciting. And then, of course, having, uh, Josh with his class one, we went ahead and filed for a alternan, alternate. Thank you, alternate staffing, my words have been alluding to this, I don't know if it was the holiday or what. Alternate staffing plan, what that means is we're looking, we're requesting permission from the Division of Water to move Josh Vaughn to an operator role on his own shift under the supervision of myself and Tyler and, um, other class four operators in the plant. You, the, the requirements of the Division of Water is that you have a minimum of a class two to be on a shift in our plant. Uh, but if you request an alternate staffing plan, they can give you permission to go ahead and move them onto a shift and then they'll give you like some guidelines and some steps that you have to follow. There's paperwork that you need to fill out, he'll have to fill out some extra logs, so that the Division of Water can kind of follow up with what he's doing. Um, but what it does is reduces the hours the operator's working. We've got three guys that are working twelve hour shifts every single day, rotating. And, um, you know, Cody works some nights and some days, I think the only day shift operator now is Mike Sartan. Uh, but Cody works all night, some nights and some days, and Garrett works all nights and a couple days, and it's really hard on our body. Um, and we'll cut down on overtime, which will also help a lot as well. They've got, what do they have, mandatory twelve hours a week of overtime right now? So, the operators are working twelve hours a minimum of overtime a week, if one of them pays off, that goes up quick. Um, I've seen operators with upwards of a hundred and sixty hours, uh, that, that there's nobody else to take their place. So, you know, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of time at the plant, you know, and, um, it's hard to do your job efficiently if you're tired, right? So, we're hoping that the Division of Water will accept the alternate staffing plan, will get Josh on his own shift. He's perfectly capable of doing it, very intelligent guy as well. He's not been with us six months yet, has he?
Six months.
Six months on the dot, six months and already got his class one, um, he'll be working towards his class two. More than capable, confident, confident in his abilities to do the job, so, um, we'll be working towards that. A lot of leaks I talked about, um, we replaced another twenty foot section of the fourteen inch main on Turkey. Um, and frankly, word went out, have two more. We've got two more leaks on the fourteen inch frame now that we know about. The problem is getting fourteen inch mains, that's not gonna be delivered until thirteenth, the week of the twelfth. Um, and, uh, if the water levels aren't high in the system and we have to shut the plant down to shut that main transmission line down, if we can run into trouble. And we also know that when we shut that main transmission line down, Inez goes out of water. So, we're working a plan, um, right now to utilize the high school tank. And if you guys recall, we've talked a lot about the need for a check valve. Well, we need a check valve with a bypass. And the reason that I'm saying that is because it came to my mind when we went through the last repair and Inez was out of water, that if we can push water from the high school tank back into Inez, why, why don't we, instead of shutting down town? So, we're gonna fill up the tank at the high school and we're gonna shut the valve on Turkey and see what, see what the system does, see if it stabilizes and everybody stays in water. And then we'll do that test first, if that works, then we'll be prepped and ready, we'll fill the tank up, we'll shut it down, keep everybody in water while we're making a repair for the first time ever. That's our goal. Our goal is to make a repair on that line without, with as minimum an impact on any of our customers as possible. Worst case, maybe one or two really close to the water plant. Um, but we'll have to shut the main down coming from the clear well, it's leaking in two spots and one of them's a pretty good leak. Um, so, uh, we've said this a million times, every time we fix one, we find another. And it's just because as we tighten up the system, some of these smaller leaks are getting bigger, and that's what's happening. And then, of course, there are also new breaks, right? So, um, but we're just continuing to, to try to focus on the areas that we can. Uh, we have replaced master meters at Buck Creek and we replaced the master meter at Meat House. Uh, maybe one of the, not Meat House, we haven't done Meat House yet, the other one was, uh, well, we replaced the Long Branch, Buck Creek. We're working on, the next two we're gonna replace is Old Route Three and Meat House, but the Buck Creek master meter, Forty East, that was the biggest one we did, but then Buck Creek is the next one. Buck Creek affects eight other subzones in our, in our water loss, uh, process, our leak, uh, leak log. So, if Buck Creek master meter isn't working, then we can't accurately figure out how much water's going to the other zones. And it went down about a month ago, um, and now that, with, now that we have the new meter in, we're seeing much, much better numbers. The long, the long, the short story is that we have to just replace all of our master meters, period, we just have to. We need to go in and replace every single one of them, because they're all, they're not, none of them are working accurately. So, the ones that we haven't replaced, we've replaced six now, um, aside, plus the plant. So, aside from the ones that we've already replaced, um, we need to replace the rest of them, so we're getting accurate readings for our leak detection. That's the only way that we're going to continue to tighten the system up. So, um, especially when we start looking at twenty gallon a minute leaks, you know? Old Route Three, if it's got a twenty gallon, or Turkey's got a twenty gallon a minute leak on it right now. But Turkey has a new master meter, so it makes it a little bit easier to find the leak when you can tell how many gallons of metal are flowing through it. But really, we need a master meter on Turkey on the other side of the tank, because we can see the water going in the tank, but we don't know what water's coming out of the tank, we've been, we're just checking the levels. So, there are some things that we still can improve on, um, and we'll get there, we'll get there. But, um, we're still pumping one, about one point four eight right now, and our customers have water, and I think, like Tyler and I were talking, you know, the past few months of the fall, when the reservoir was the lowest we'd ever seen it, um, a couple of months ago, and all our customers were still in water, that's still a testament to where we are. We're still looking at a hundred million gallons less a year of production than the district has seen in over twenty years. Um, so, we're still headed in the right direction, it's just, it's gonna be a battle.
Operational challenges, man.
It is, it's a battle. So, does anyone have any questions on the ops report that's? Uh, oh, there's one thing I wanted to tell, I do need to tell you, we did have a violation. The water system received a tier two violation for turbidity. Uh, what that means is that, um, at the water plant, there was a disruption in treatment and that, uh, turbidity levels went above a one N T U, it was actually like a three N T U for more than four hours. Um, and really, we were, I'm really happy with what the operators were able to do. Some of it was a little bit of a learning experience, um, it was all handled very well, but there was a lot of learning through the process. Um, had, had to do with turbidity coming into the plant and then turbidity in the clarifiers, there's a sludge blanket. It's a very, it's a very detailed explanation for all of the treatment processes in the plant, but if they don't maintain an adequate sludge blanket, they can have a turbidity spike and turbidity breakthrough. There was a lot of stuff going on at the time, there was a major power outage, how long was the power out, four hours?
Uh, the, the outage was for the chemical feed pumps.
That's right, for the chemical.
One aspect of it, we had a small electrical fire in the panel that caused the chemical feed pumps. Uh, we had worked to reroute water most of the day to clarifier one, get it operational. Uh, we had some power issues with one of our high service pumps, uh, had to switch pumps, uh, that was a loose connection, um, that just a.
This is another thing too, with the project that's going on, we have several hands in our power panels that are doing things that need to be done for the project, but every single time they do something, they break something. Every single time, we've had an issue. This time, they must have moved a wire that may have been already loose, who knows? And caused a, a short circuit of some kind that caused the fire. And so, uh, the feed pumps went down and it caused a disruption. They were, but, but staff did a good job, Tyler did a good job getting with the operators and they got it situated, but unfortunately, we did see a spike in the turbidity levels. Um, we issued the system wipe rule advisories, everyone probably saw, um, we followed all the protocols we got with the Division of Water. They're pleased with our response, they're pleased with how we handled everything. It sucks, but it is the nature of what we do sometimes, and the way we treat water, um, hiccups like that can cause, uh, things to happen. Little good learning experience, and I fully expect the operators to respond, um, even better the next time. So, I think that, uh, going forward, we, we should be good, but, you know, those things do happen, so. And we have very old turbidity meters that need to be replaced as well, so they're, they're actually obsolete. So, it would help to have, uh, that, those replaced down the road as well, but that is important, you do need to know. You'll see that, that violation will be on the bill card for the next billing cycle, uh, we are required to notify. And then, of course, it'll be on our C C R, uh, but, uh, it's not gonna affect water quality, everything's okay, it was just, uh, you know, like I said, a couple hours. Turbidity can be anything from a spec to a log, and we don't have any logs in our water, so. But, um, anyway, that's, that's the bad news that I have to tell you, and so, we're through that.
So, I know as you said, calibrated your online turbidity, was it accurate?
We always calibrate them, uh, it's something that we're required to do, uh, by the state, so, uh, they get calibrated. We just don't have any replacement parts because they're obsolete, um, so it, it's, they're challenged because they're old.
Any other questions for Craig on operations? If not, we'll move on to water loss.
Well, talked about, talking about water loss, um, you know, water sales are down, that's a big one. We talked about that. We talked about that, uh, residential sales down to nine million. I guess, you know, I don't, I don't know, um, some of that could be due to the fact that, um. We had a couple of days with some guys that, that were off, we had to, we had to replace a meter reader. Um, and with the replacement of that meter reader, we got a little bit slower. So, some of our customer were estimated, that could have a, a portion of it, a portion to do with it. Um, but, um, residential sales were down, so, uh. And we still only pumped forty-three million gallons, which is still pretty low. Um, it's not the forty-one from June, which is the goal we're shooting for, but, uh, forty-three is still, you know, still low. Um, and, uh, we're still headed in the right direction, I just like you guys, I don't like seeing that number go up. And we do have a lot of leaks in our system. I know two weeks ago, we had twenty leaks on G I S. Um, today, when I looked at it, we have four. So, we are getting them, but, uh, it's just, you know, a lot of work and a lot of money it costs to fix, make those repairs too. Um, it's one of the reasons that we haven't attacked the fourteen inches month. You know, fourteen inch main is expensive, fourteen inch high maxes are in the thousands of dollars. And, uh, I was hoping that we would be able to make it to January to turn over our budget before we did it. Uh, so it wasn't someone high on the district's budget, but I don't think we're gonna be able to.
Is that the one near the plant they're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. There's actually two right there, one in front of the valve cluster and then one downstream of it. So, and the one that is upstream of it is pretty substantial.
The fourteen inch main, when, when one of those actually blows, it'll blow, it's like an explosion out.
That's why we don't want it to blow out, we want it to.
Yeah, I mean, but, but, you know, you start off with, there is something, there's a small leak on the fourteen inch.
Well, every leak starts with a small leak, right? Every leak does.
Yeah.
Every leak in a distribution system starts with a small leak.
A leak with the pressure that's on the fourteen inch, it pushes out a whole lot of water than what.
There's a lot of volume there for sure.
Yeah.
Any questions for Craig on water loss? If not, we'll move on to our leak adjustments for the month. Uh, leak adjustments start on six C, uh, C one through E C four. Um, if everybody's had a chance to review those, I'll seek a motion to approve our leak adjustments for the month. Mr. Hensley makes the motion, can I hear you a second? Mr. Swann seconds, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Um, we've been touching on capital projects, that's the next item on our agenda, um, number seven. Uh, Craig, you want to talk about some other projects here in just a second too, you just wanna give some highlights real quick and good things.
The biggest thing that we'll highlight is the auto ground pump station line replacement project, that's E, that's moving along. I wouldn't, I'm gonna be getting final drawings on that project, uh, very soon. They've actually already quit, um, they've submitted, uh, they're submitting drawings to me to, to review. And then the booster station drawings as well. So, once we get those in, we'll review them, we'll come over. Um, and just if you're kinda curious what we're gonna be doing, um, the booster station that's gonna be in, in place of the auto ground. Will look identical or very similar to the high school booster station. So, if you know where that is, right there, next to six forty-five, it'll be that block building. Um, I have the, uh, same type of pumps and, uh, SCADA inside there as well, a generator hookup for it as well. Um, and, uh, I haven't looked at the scope to see if there's a generator, but I need to review that as well. Uh, but line replacement on the other side of six forty-five there, uh, will be in that area where the, uh, physical therapy offices are. Um, and then up to the tank and then going out new Route Three. Um, so booster station and then we'll replace line on Eli Road from, not all the way, about halfway from Middle Ford down to the booster station. We have about two, two hundred gallons a minute, two hundred fourteen gallons a minute going through that station right now. A hundred and thirty gallons a minute going through that station with the pump off. Which means there's probably a very large leak in that area. Um, we also believe that there's a lot of hydraulic restrictions because we've got three inch, four inch, six inch, all in that same area. Um, and there's a ton of different kinds of lines, one inch line feeding Craig Priest's from across the road, one underneath through Route Three. All of that is gonna be replaced, uh, that's the goal. So, we can hopefully, we also, and, and the line going up six forty-five. Cause we believe that there's a big leak somewhere between the booster station and either the customers on six forty-five. Or somewhere down in that bottom there where the physical therapy offices, uh, bus garage. There's a leak somewhere there that we cannot find, could be under the rip wrap or the film from where they did six forty-five. But we know that there's lines there that are very, very deep. Um, so when we eliminate all of that system and have a whole new line, we're hopeful that we're gonna see some reduction in, in water loss right away. Um, on the, um. Lovely Warfield, lovely line replacement, that project has gone out to contractors for bid. It is, uh, it will be posted in the paper on the ninth, is that right?
Sixth.
The sixth, uh, sixth or ninth? Yeah, so next Wednesday, it'll be in the paper, so it'll be going out to bid. Um, so hopefully, we'll start getting bids back for that project to get underway. That's gonna be the Collins Creek line replacement and then some of Warfield. Um, and if we can't replace lines of Warfield, we're gonna do the valving at least and tie in the loop. So, Warfield will be looped, there won't be a dead end there and we'll tie one, one valves on each side so that we can move water in different directions when we have an issue. So, that's out to bid as well. Those are really the two, um, aside from what we're gonna talk about new business, those are the two big things.
Both those projects under bill?
All. Right now, all of our water projects are under bill. And keep in mind, when, you know, the, the district never actually, um. When you selected Fishback, we never stopped saying we were gonna use Fishback. They just want forty-five thousand dollars as a retainer.
Yeah, we don't have that.
And we don't have forty-five thousand dollars as a retainer. So, we can always do another bid, we can always do another, uh, request for qualifications for our water system if the board wishes.
Potential for that forty-five thousand to go around, that's still in play, yeah, so we're looking at that.
So, we're looking into that, yeah. But, you know, there's always, you know, the option for the district to do a request for qualifications. And you can do a request for qualifications for any project you want on that list. You know, you can do individual RFQs for every single project if you want, which is what I would love to do. I'd love to have different engineers on every project personally.
I kinda felt that's what we.
It was.
Well, that's what we intended to do and then we didn't have the money to give Fishback the retainers.
See, that's the, that's the name of the game, we've been fortunate. We selected Prime, Prime bought a Kentucky engineering company. They bought a engineering company that was already based in Little, or Lexington, I'm sorry. So, when we started working, when we started working with Prime, they kinda had an idea of what was, what needed to be done. When it came to working with utilities that needed grant assistance. They had done work down in, uh, Belfry, or not Belfry, um, Betsy Lane on E one, stuff down there, they'd worked with Mountain Water. They were familiar with our landscape of funding, right? So, it was easier for them to understand. We got an invoice from Prime, we got an invoice from Prime for the work that they did at the wastewater plant. But I picked up the phone and I called them and said, hey, here's the project and here's the money. That invoice needs to go towards that and they said, yeah, our bad, accounting wasn't paying attention, we'll fix it. They understand how it's gonna work. There are not a lot of engineering firms that do that. Most, in a well-financed, well-run utility, an engineering firm, much like, uh, you know, an attorney. Is gonna get paid when they do business, right? And all of them are nice enough to hold their, hold their bills for years.
For years, or longer.
How many?
Three years.
Three years, right.
He knows exactly.
So, so, most of them want paid, they want a retainer, they want paid upfront. And, and in most utilities, that, that is what happens, right? You pay them for their project scope, you pay them for their design and then you pay them for the construction management.
Um, but, you know, that's Prime.
That's how most engineers are. But Bell and Prime operate under a different philosophy. And that's why it's a blessing for us in a lot of ways. Because we can go to Bell and ask them to do work for us and they'll do it knowing that as long as their name is attached to the project in the W R S portal. They're gonna be the engineers on the project and then they're gonna be able to, to, they're gonna recover their money. And there are other engineering firms that do that as well. And it's a great practice, um, you know, for them, they, they, they do well that way. Um, and for districts like us, it helps us out because we can't afford to pay engineers. But you get pigeonholed into giving the same engineering firm for every single project. Which is what, you know. And I promise you that there are people that would say, of course Bell wants to do all of our projects, why wouldn't they? Right? They, they wanna make money just like everybody else.
Yeah.
So, why wouldn't they wanna do our projects? But are they doing, are they giving us the best work possible? That's just a question.
All right, anything else for Craig on the five-year C I P and the project updates? If not, uh, any other old business?
Oh, I have a question about the, um, five-year. Now, where it says in grant portal. Um, you're, the Water Management Council, man, they were supposed to say which projects would be sent.
For asylum funding?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. That is scheduled for December eighth.
It is?
Sixth. Sixth, third.
I saw that email, yeah.
Uh-huh, in the rankings?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I got the.
What are we, what are gonna be?
Well, it's, this, they have the rankings already, um, I'd have, I don't have them in front of me, but they, it's good, the way they're ranked on here is gonna, is the way that they've been handed. If they're a one, then they, what I did was took the ones and said, one, two, three, four.
Okay.
Okay, so we have multiple ones on here, ones, one, two, three, four. And I believe the projects that we sent them. Um, when I actually spoke to Eric Ratliff with Big Sandy and talked to him about this, uh, I told him I was concerned because, you know, we have some promises of money. Potentially from other people for projects that are on this list. But those projects need done. And I don't want to put all our eggs in one basket and hope that this person gives us money for these projects. And then go out and put these projects in for funding, you know, not item two projects in for funding somewhere else because, oh, we've got these covered. So, let's try to get money for these. I'd rather take all of our ones and put them in for all, as much funding as we can from everybody. And just say, hopefully, between the two or three different funding agencies that we're seeking grants from, whether it be the state, um, uh. You know, appropriations committee in their budget or the, uh, you know, A R C or A N L or K I A, whatever it is. Hopefully, we'll get all of our ones covered through all of those, right? So, if we just put the same projects for funding for everything, hopefully, every single project gets funded. And then next year, we do the same thing again with our next projects. The ones that didn't get funded, all of them go to every funding agency for every amount of funding we can get. Same, and, and every year after that. Um, and that's just how we do it until every project that we have on our list is funded and then we start a new list.
So, what about, I thought there was a news report or some type of blasphemy. Our congressman about the cold water line replacement, not eight million, but.
Five point three, something like that.
Yeah, so where is that in the?
I haven't, I haven't gotten an update on that, I don't know exactly where it's at, um, but, I mean, I've heard rumors that that's funded. But I don't know exactly where yet.
But if I recall, I think that the fiscal court was instrumental in pushing that, so.
Fiscal court did.
Yeah, I mean, they, they did.
They really did. They have been a great help.
They have.
To this point. I gotta give them credit. All right, anything else? All right, so now we're gonna move into, uh, new business. Um, first thing on the agenda is nine A, this is the Water Management Assistance Fund Resolution slash application. And that's the next several pages, it's like nine A to. Nine A, I looked earlier, nine A twelve.
Yep, through nine A twelve.
So. Craig, I'm gonna let you kinda go through this and then I'll read the resolution for the record, but, um, kind of explain what this is and, and why this is a good thing for us.
You don't have to read the resolution.
I don't have to read it, okay.
I already checked into that because there's a lot of whereas in there and.
Yeah, whereas and.
I'm, I've been tongue tied lately, so.
I got you.
Um, but, so, I received a phone call, um. About a month ago from the executive director of K I A, Sandy Williams. And she informed me that K I A was looking at, they have a new fund and there's roughly ten million dollars in this fund. And that they were looking at opportunities to help, um, you know, with management assistance for water utilities. And I guess, uh, Gary Laramore and Scott Young with Kentucky Real Water Association went to K I A and said. We have a loan with the Martin County Water District for roughly one point one billion dollars. And as of right now, there's no real terms, right? We know we have two years, we actually have until the end of February to come up with either a loan or a payment for that loan. And, um, we would like to see if there's a way that K I A could fund this loan. So, Sandy went to their board of directors and spoke to them and they came up with this plan. And we will be the first utility ever to utilize this, this fund. So, Water Management Assistance Fund, and basically what they're offering is a twenty-year, zero percent interest. Twenty-year term for a one point three three million dollar loan roughly. To combine our current K I A loan that has a three percent interest rate. And I have the amount here, we owe two hundred eighteen thousand seven sixty-six roughly with three percent interest rate on it. The payment on it is fifty-six, fifty-seven, eighty-eight every month. It's what the district pays on the current K I A loan. Um, so it would combine the, the K I A loan for two hundred eighteen thousand that you currently have, that's been with the district for years. I'm not sure how long. Um, and it would also, um, take the debt for the, um, sorry, the Kentucky Real Water Loan. So, I had the real water financing agencies, uh, payoff letter stating how much is to be paid off, which is one point one zero four three oh nine sixty-six to be exact. Combine those two loans, zero percent interest rate for twenty years. The payment on that loan would be roughly three hundred dollars less a month than what we're paying right now on the K I A loan and have been paying for a long time. Additionally, they are going to set metrics up for debt forgiveness. So, at five-year and ten-year marks, if we meet certain metrics that they set that we agree upon. They've actually told me they wanna sit down and discuss what those are gonna look like. And if we can come to an agreement, which I know we can, on what those look like, we can set up some forgiveness for that loan as well. So, we could be looking at a cheaper payment on a twenty-year term, zero-interest loan through K I A. With potential forgiveness, don't know how much, so it could be five percent, could be ninety-five percent, don't know. Potential forgiveness over the course of that twenty years. It's a no-brainer.
It's a gift.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
And it's the only option that we have on the table right now to pay off the Kentucky Real Water. And I'm telling you right now, directors, that all you need to do is approve this resolution and sign this application. And this is. That all you need to do is approve this for the resolution and sign this application and this is as good as a done deal, salute.
Yeah.
I'm excited, man.
I'm not saying that there's not gonna be any hangups.
There always is.
But there are a lot of people working very hard.
To help us.
To make this happen.
Yes.
And I think that I really feel confident that if we can get this approved by the board, that it's gonna coming and 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 keep in mind that this is all moving very, very fast.
Yes.
I had to have this application done, I had to have the resolution done, I had to have all these documents in in front of you today. Because it has to be in front of the board of directors at KIA on December fifth. We're moving that fast. So this is moving quickly, cause we only have until the end of February and keep in mind that once this is approved, it still has to go before the PSC.
Yeah.
PSC has to approve it, right? So.
We spoke to them too, and I don't think.
Yes, I don't think we're gonna, we spoke to the PSC, we're not, I don't think, but there's still turnaround time, right? So we're under the gun to make sure we get all this done and 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 get it all submitted in a timely fashion to make this happen.
But this, if this is a loan, how, how does that affect the ten million dollar fund? It's a loan.
Well, I mean.
We're paying back.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they're going to their fund, hopefully they can give us some forgiveness.
Their goal is to build this, right? They wanna be able to help and assist other utilities in the future, if they just give all their money away, then they can't do it anymore, right? And then, of course, if it works and it works well, then they can get more money from the government to fund that, which is why. It's a loan, but it's a loan with debt forgiveness. We just have to set what the debt forgiveness is, I don't, like I said, oh, it could be a hundred percent debt forgiveness. If we meet the best metrics, which I can promise you we'll try. But I don't, I don't know what those metrics are yet, we haven't established that because this is happening so fast, that part hasn't happened yet.
So basically what this resolution says is you're just giving local manager, division manager, me as the board chairman, the ability to move forward with this and sign. And um get this in front of those guys and hopefully, you know, say, Craig, there's always hip-ups, seems to be.
Yeah.
I mean, but this is a, a great deal for us, better than I've ever anticipated.
Better than I ever would have dreamed.
Yeah, so um.
I don't make the motion, then it's.
Mr. Hesley made the motion, Ms. McCoy second.
And this, and this will help builds eventually because of the debt service search situation.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Ms. McCoy second, all in favor say aye, uh any opposed? Alright. Alright, so we're gonna.
Keep me on the loop now.
We'll talk, we got.
Yes.
I got a scathing email, but you need to put, you need to tell me, I'm sorry.
We cannot let the timeline go by, right?
No.
It's exactly right, yeah.
No, we gotta go, so, alright, nine B. This is the uh, nine B is the Kentucky two thousand twenty-four FYDWS R F one invitation, aye Craig? Leave this when I was away. Okay, so um. I'm gonna wrap my head around all of these here. Yeah, so this is the lead service line, so the water district has been approved for a two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar. Uh lead service line inventory grant through SRF. Um for just like kind of a brief overview of the lead service line inventory. Uh the federal EPA, the US EPA uh came out with lead service line um guidance and ruling several years ago. And over the course of the past five years or so, uh or 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 so, utilities have been mandated. To go through their system and remove or inventory and then eventually remove all lead service lines from their system. The problem with that is that it included customer tax up to the customer's home. And so there's been a lot of pushback from many different states trying to change this, it's not gonna happen. Uh bottom line is, we have to go to every customer, we have to verify with that customer whether or not they have plastic, whether they have uh, whether they have PVC or plastic or. Or uh galvanized or lead or copper lines in their service to their home. Um and we've created a survey that we're gonna be asking all our customers, whether they come into office, the ladies are asking them, if they call into the office, ladies are asking them. Uh we're probably gonna find a way to try to put it online so the customers can fill it out online and submit it as well. Um but there are tons of steps that we have to go through, we have to verify, physically verify every customer service in the county. At our time and at theirs and make sure that it's not lead, now I'll tell you this. Of the thousands of service line repairs that we've done in the four, and I do mean thousands of service line repairs we've made in the four years since we've been here. I haven't seen a single lead service line, not one. I have never seen, I've never seen lead anywhere in our district, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
But the EPA is not gonna take Craig Miller's word for it, right? We have to dig it up, we have to have documentation, we have to have, you know, either dig reports or installation reports, all of these ports, reports in an inventory. And submitted to the EPA by the end of next year. So most of the utilities were submitted for grant assistance, the grant assistance for this specific uh SRF fund. Know it's in here, wanted to read what it said so you had an understanding right here. It covers um. So the project will allow the utility contractor, an engineer or consulting firm to conduct the inventory for them as the utility does not have the available manpower to do so themselves. Uh district personnel contract labor will be utilized um for the inventory for uh. From previous material evaluation, installation day after lead ban, so there's a lead ban, if you're familiar with when the lead ban will go effect. Any installation after that period is automatically gonna be lead-free, right? So we know it's lead, uh it's lead-free, so any installation post-lead ban is gonna be lead-free. But we gotta go through those records if they exist, if they don't exist, we have to go out and physically dig up the line.
When was the lead ban?
Nineteen.
I'm gonna say late seventies, early eight.
That's what I was gonna say, nineteen, uh late seventies, seventy-nine, but I don't remember off, I don't know exactly, but it is. So any, anything that was installed post that is probably not gonna have lead in it. But uh the project will provide purchase of GPS unit and tablet to allow documentation of service lines. Here's what has been added to the project. The project will also provide uh procurement on this project in addition to consulting. Contractor engagement and labor includes AGOL licensing, GPS equipment, tablets, vehicles. Contracting excavation and contingency for unknown potential costs. So. Um there's a potential that exists for us to be able to um get some equipment that we would need to do this project. And.
You know what's the project?
Since you've already contracted. Yes, since you've already contracted an outside agency, we can do all of the work internally, we've already been doing it, we're already underway. We already have a GPS or GIS system in place. So a new GPS unit would be good, it wouldn't hurt. Um but we definitely are gonna need to go out and physically look at all of these sites. So um I spoke to a couple of the utility managers in the area who informed me that their intent with the project funding that they receive. Uh was to hire additional personnel, temporary people and a couple of vehicles for them to use. So that they can go out to each one of these sites and they can dig them up and look at them. So I said, if that, if they can do it, why can't we?
So a couple of vehicles, potentially excavator, trailer, things like that, and then once the project is done, that would become.
Once the lead service line project is.
Once the project is complete, then that will become property of Martin County Water District.
It'll become, it will go into the fleet for the Martin County Water.
Yeah. And if we have our own vehicles, you know, not necessarily depending on why it's to provide.
Right, we're not talking about.
Right.
Something, right?
Couple vehicles, just something.
Some for a fleet.
Kind of a big deal, guys, it's kind of a great opportunity to be able to um, you know. Get things that our employees need to do their job.
Do you have an idea, I mean, Cody's pretty good at looking up stuff, uh he, he seems to know when this was put there, when that was put there, so I don't know if he's looked all that stuff up. When were the oldest lines?
Yeah, I don't know.
We'll think.
The oldest lines would have to be on this side.
Uh yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna be an I N S, right, um and but we've not found any lead I N S.
Could be toward Tom Hocken.
Right, we still haven't found any lead I N S.
And you can take people's information from them of what they say they had in their house, you don't have to go and check in their house if they.
Not inside their home, no, but we may have to dig up the service hall, if they don't have some way to verify it with us. If they can give us a build date of their home, then we can go off of that or, you know, when their house was put in and when the tap was put in, we can figure it out that way.
So we'll just need a motion to uh allow us to move forward um with this particular.
Actually, yeah, I have a resolution for that as well, everything has to be submitted for the lead service line inventory by.
Now, is that a loan also or is that a grant?
No, it is a grant, it's a hundred percent forgiveness, it's a hundred percent grant.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Say.
Alright, so Mr. Sloan makes the motion, Mr. Hesley seconds, all in favor say aye.
Have you had a motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah, motion, the, the motion to approve the resolution of what Craig and I have to move forward. Mr. Hesley makes that motion, can I hear a second on that, second, Mr. Sloan seconds, all in favor say aye, any opposed? Alright, last item here, nine D, um which I love this idea.
Oh, there was skip one.
C.
Oh, I'm sorry, skip C, oh, forgive me, nine C, uh. Contract one thirteen dash twenty-three oh four, Kentucky two nine two booster pump station and water storage tank, this has to do with the telemetry. Uh and that tank bid was put out, we got one bid back and it was recommended that we accept this bid by bill engineering. That's what this uh microcomp um at a cost of forty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars for completion of the project and that money is, or. That money's coming from the leftover money from the project that we did up that way, so we just need a motion to approve uh accepting microcom's bid.
Salute.
Mr. Hesley makes the motion, can I hear a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Crum seconds, all in favor say aye, any opposed? Alright, now, nine D, I thought that was a good idea to approve too, but I really, I really like this one. So talking about the auto ground station, we're gonna rehabilitate that, bring it up out of the ground. And uh staff is recommending that we rename that particular booster station uh to Earl T Alley Booster uh pump station in honor of Tom. Who just recently retired um and worked for the district for many, many, many years and. I have to say, when I first got here, man was like a magician, um he, I don't know how he kept that plant going, I really don't. Um but staff is recommending that when we do this uh renovation to the pump station, that we change it to, change the name to Earl T Alley Booster Pump Station. And uh I think it'd be a great honor, a good man and. I've dedicated his life to the system, over thirty-plus years of twenty-four hours, twelve hours a day, seven days a week. Between him and Mike Sartain, that time when they didn't have operators, um through all of the bad times. And very, 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 very few good times.
Yeah.
And I think that it is a, an excellent homage to the good man. Who dedicated his life to, life to a system when he could've went anywhere and did what he did at a very, making a lot more money.
A lot more money.
And a lot less stress.
More money and a lot less stress.
Absolutely.
So I'd like to seek a motion, uh.
Salute.
Mr. Hesley makes that motion, can I hear a second?
I'll say.
Ms. McCoy seconds, all in favor say aye, any opposed? Alright, very good, uh no reason to go into executive session this evening, so I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Mr. Hesley makes the motion, can I?